Next would be, presentation sir?
Mr. DeLeon has a special announcement.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Whoever's disrupting the mea- sorry, Mr. DeLeon. Who's ever disrupting the meeting will ask you to stop now. We'll ask the sergeants to identify.
The gentleman with the white t-shirt and the backpack right there and the glasses.
Uh, who's hissing? Thank you. Alright.
That's the one right there. Thank you very much. I'll wait until he was doing it again.
Sergeants, can we tell who's hissing? Alright, Mr. DeLeon.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President, as well as colleagues. Colleagues, it's my honor to recognize Judge Miguel Angel Galvez of Guatemala.
I am seventeen. It's a fucking reep, but reep item. Reeps are, we need to get rid of them. They're, they're, they ask for too much money. Just like everything, everything else in this fucking ci- every, everything else in this fucking city. Like the barber shops and everything else. We should get rid of the fucking reeps.
Good morning.
Groot, you're not allowed to silence people when other people are clapping. If someone wants to boo or hiss, that's their right, just so you know. Um, all items and general public comment, please.
So you have four minutes. Please begin with the items.
Beginning with the items. Um, so we have a new appointment coming up for the neighborhood commissioners. Um, Douglas Epperhart, um, from, what is it? He's on a neighborhood council. From what I can tell, he seems like a fine appointment. Um, I'm just wondering why the mayor gets an appointment for the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. Um, the neighborhood councils really don't have a lot of actual power. We have a lot of symbolic power, "we" as in the neighborhood council system. Um, but it's kinda like when you, when you give your kid an old broken phone to play with because they wanted to play with yours. Um, it would be nice if the NCs could just appoint our own commissioners instead of leaving it up to the mayor or y'all when there's kind of an adversarial relationship between those bodies. Um, so then we have a lot of motions here for the rent escrow account program. Y'all know how much I love the rent escrow account program. R-E-A-P stands for REAP. Um, so that means when a landlord violates their contract by not holding up their end of the bargain, uh, you would think that the tenant, who is still fulfilling their end of the contract by paying rent, um, you'd think they would get a break on rent or not have to fulfill their end of the bargain. Because generally, if you're in a contract with someone, if you violate terms of the contract, it breaks the contract and no one is obligated. If you come to my restaurant and buy a hamburger and then I don't bring you a hamburger, you don't have to pay me. If, if you order a burger and I never bring it to your table, I can't then demand you pay your bill and I'll give you the burger when I get to it. That's basically what these rent escrow accounts are. Um, tenants are living without the things that their lease says they need or the health department says they need or the county code enforcement says they need. But rather than saying, hey, because this obligation was not fulfilled, you don't have to fulfill your end either. They say, no, you still have to fulfill your end. We'll just put it in a secret, super safe account that no one can touch until abatement requirements are met and then your landlord gets all their money. And, um, only for landlords, politicians and CEOs is that how the law works. For us working folks, when we don't hold up our end of the bargain, we violate contracts, we actually get punished. Um, but you all wouldn't know anything about that, would you? Um, and again, I just, when I clarify that you can't dictate whether or not people boo or hiss if people are clapping and hooting and hollering, that's their right.
This is not on the agenda? Please stick to the agenda items.
Oh, it's not? Oh, thanks for reminding me, Groot.
Or you can move on to general public comment.
Sure. Um, so shout out to Smoke and Scan, shout out DJ Paul Krikorian. This is Taylor Swift on the track. Now we all know what's up. Every city council member is corrupt. Kevin's racist, none of y'all give a fuck. Broke your promises when y'all just gave it up, up, up. Can't you see what these people do? Lie and break the rules in plain view, babe. Scouting is Nithya Ramon's energy. It's a Hollywood thing, she's filthy rich baby. Council chamber bully politicians. Staffer be in trouble after snitching. Always switching sides, trading votes and then some. Ooh, these politicians think we're so dumb. Now we all know what's up. Every city council member is corrupt. Kevin's racist, none of y'all give a fuck. Broke your promises when y'all just gave it up, up, up. Big fuck you to Kevin DeLeon, big fuck you to Nithya Ramon, big fuck you to Marquis, big fuck you to Bob, big fuck you to Groot, big shout out to Smoke and Scan and fuck you to the IDF, death to Israel, free Palestine.
Yes?
You're on.
Okay, my name's Harriet Elliott and I'm basically saying what I said last week.
And which, sorry, which items would you like to speak to?
Oh, what item? I thought general comment, you're allowed to speak.
Okay, so yes, you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay. I'm speaking basically on the same item that I spoke on before. Uh, the CIA can actually bypass the ears and go straight to the head and they can silence what I'm saying. So I had a distinct impression that some people didn't hear what I said. And what it is, is my leader that represents me believed in no touch torture. About a year ago, I was in a Jimenez class in East LA and I heard on the blogs that Robert Duncan was saying that they do have implants. Well, he never said that and, um, what is going on is that they are actually impersonating him. They have two men called Hall, both John Halls, one from Fresno, one from Texas, and they're lying. Yeah, so I hope that people will actually take the things I handed out about this man and read.
Hi, my name is, um, Abril Villanueva. Good morning, city council members. I'm here to talk about guaranteed basic income with Big Leap. Um, I'm a community member. Sorry, I have PTSD and my brain is struggling right now. Um... I'm a community leader with Rising Community. And I'm a former homeless veteran. I lived in a transitional home with my infant child in Delta, LA. And I am here in support for the funding Big Leap. This program will contribute to the greater social stability by reducing the financial stress and lead to better mental health and improve the quality of life. When I lived in the transitional home, I saw firsthand how a lot of women that were homeless had to resort to selling their bodies while they had assistance. So please, support Big Leap. It will have a big impact in the community. Thank you so much.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak to?
Uh, hi, my name is Alex Miller. I'm speaking under general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, good morning. So, I am a ten-year resident of CD-10. I've been car-free since 2019, making most of my trips by bike or transit. And I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about the future of a metro program. I understand that this is not a metro board meeting, but I think it's important that the city council is aware of an issue that affects a number of districts across the city. Metro staff has recommended that the Metro Bike Share program be awarded to Lyft, a car-share company. The main reason cited for this recommendation is cost, but a closer look at the bid between Lyft and the current operator shows that there are significant flaws with the evaluation process and a number of hidden costs. The cost comparison is much closer than Metro staff has indicated when doing an apples-to-apples comparison. In addition, the Lyft CEO has publicly said that the main purpose of Bike Share is to introduce people to the rideshare side of the app. Uh, for a publicly funded program, Metro Bike Share should not be operated by a company who profits when people don't take public transit. Thank you.
My name's Michael Gardiel and it's for general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Hello, like Alex, I'm also speaking for your support to speak against Lyft, who is a car-centric corporation that's taking over Metro Bike Share. Metro Bike Share has been a very useful tool for citizens in the city and like the red car, I don't want to see that disappear. I, I want you to realize that Lyft has, um, in other cities, a bad track record of taking over bike share in other cities, um, raising the prices and shutting down world-class bike shares like in Minnesota. Please consider the current contractor and, and, and speak with the metro board about this decision as being bad. Thank you.
Uh, all items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment? Please begin with the items.
I just want to say, I think it's absurd that it took over a year to get the Board of Rights item in front of this full council and it has no viable path of making the November ballot. Wonder, you know, has Paul Krikorian, like the, the current chair sitting there, ever had a gun pulled on him by LAPD? No. Has he ever been asked if he's on probation or parole? I bet every time he encounters a cop, they say, yes, sir. How you doing, sir? Um, just, just one of those consequences of having white boy in charge of everything from LAPD to the budget to the city hall. For item number eighteen, I don't know this particular nominee to bonk, but I've heard great things. I hope they are aware of the current status within C's, having their budgets reduced, uh, Krikorian repeatedly gutting city services after the Great Recession, then during COVID, and now with these LAPD hikes. How this council has ignored the demand for MLO reform untouched for over a year. Ethics charter reforms, council expansion, we've had forty to fifty NCs weigh in on that. No action, not going to be on the ballot. Uh, we had an ethics appointee not given the decency of a heads-up that they would be publicly trashed or the opportunity to defend themselves. Currently, you know, we have our city attorney, Fuer, uh, who, who threatened NCs and told them that they couldn't issue CIS statements regarding council member Lee and his ethics violations. And now our current city attorney, Heidi Felstine Soto, related to her own fuck-up with CPRAs and LAPD info, is now trying to bully neighborhood councils across this city and telling them they can't weigh in on that. Um, I, I, uh, you know, I just, Groot, when there's a disruption, if like, we were in court and that was being challenged.
Mr. Quan, this is not currently on the agenda. You can speak to it during general public comment, but if you'd like to, please speak to the agenda items first.
Send me there, Groot.
You have one minute for general public comment.
You, you would need some sort of articulable evidence, no? I, I, I want you to have one of these cops racking up quite a nice salary, sit next to us so they can give that evidence, because you really don't have it. It's also just absurd that, again, today, we've seen this before, Groot, where things are called disruptions that happen at the same time people are applauding. You have to have a content-neutral approach, do you not? I want to know where Paul is. As much as I like having the current chair sitting up there, uh, where's the big dog? The Government Reform Committee has not met since November, or had met one time since November and in that meeting, he said they'd be meeting again mid, mid-February. It's now March. He hasn't said shit to clarify his ethics violations with those emails. So I want to know who in his office aided and abetted that effort?
My name is Tamar Peña. I am here to give general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Given the predicted budget deficit, I personally think the smart move would be to fund budget items that will stimulate the economy. Guaranteed basic income, by giving tax dollars directly to the people who need the most financial support, is a sure way to make sure the city works its way out of the projected deficit. I think, based on reports from different guaranteed income pilot programs across the country and worldwide, that if this council were to fund guaranteed basic income, the city could avoid having to bail out small businesses like it did four years ago because the recipients of guaranteed basic income would circulate that money they receive back into their communities. By funding guaranteed basic income in a year of projected budget deficits, LA would curb facing even bigger crises next year. As we were doing voter registration last month, every high school student we interacted with identified homelessness as an issue they would like to be able to fix through the voting process. As adults, thank you.
Um, I would like to extend my gratitude to the esteemed members of our city council and to our UPAS members who are here in the audience today. My name is Brianna Maldonado and I stand before you as an advocate for guaranteed basic income. GBI is a cause that holds profound personal significance to me, driven by admired reasons, chief among them being the creation of a robust, ah, of a robust, sorry, one second. Of a robust financial safety net for our community. As we are all aware, many Angelenos find themselves struggling just one paycheck away from being homeless, as I was myself. GBI offers the promise of stability and security, not only to individuals and families, but to our city as a whole. It has the potential to stimulate our local economy, alleviate poverty, and provide countless benefits that will uplift our community. With conviction and hope, I stand here today to urge you, our city leaders, to allocate funding for the guaranteed basic income program. Together, what most importantly, you, as you are the one with the vote, can take a significant step towards a more equitable future. Thank you.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Vicenta Martinez. Yo vivo en el área de Westlake y estoy aquí en apoyo a que se apruebe el GBI porque esto representa una ayuda económica para todas aquellas personas.
I am here to support the passing of the GBI because this represents economic help for all of the low-income people.
De bajos ingresos que han estado batallando para completar el pago de su renta y para mantener a su familia.
People of low income that are struggling to pay their rent and be able to support their family.
La canasta básica y la renta han aumentado mucho. Es muy difícil que las familias cubran sus necesidades básicas. Por esta razón les pido que sean conscientes en la situación de miles de personas que se beneficiarán del programa.
So a shopping basket and income have increased a lot now and it is very difficult for families to cover basic needs. For this reason, I would implore that you be aware of the situation of thousands of people that would benefit from this program.
Por favor voten sí, porque ustedes tienen en sus manos el mejor futuro para hombres, mujeres y niños que están en esta situación afectados por el alto costo de la vida en Los Angeles. Gracias.
So I implore to you to please vote yes because you have in your hands the better future for women and men and children who are all being affected by the high cost of living in Los Angeles. And thank you very much.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, Pumpkinhead, all the goddamn items and general fucking public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment? Please begin with the item.
So now, today, Kevin has taken a reversal. He's not fucking up anymore. Let's give him a hand. Oh, my God, holy shit. I guess you looked at your benefit package and like to keep it past November. Watch out, Unisus, pay attention. He's coming back. So we have number twelve. Yes, taking rent escrow and giving the money back to the landlord. Yum, 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 yum. And then we have the criminal, the indicted one, Curran Price. Still indicted and getting paid. Yay! That's right. Yes, someday when I perhaps fuck up, I want to be paid to be a criminal too, someday if necessary. And a number thirteen, he has emancipated a Central Avenue apartment building, a complete fucking shithole. Curran Price wouldn't walk a dead dog on that fucking street. He's never been there, right? What a piece of shit your district is, Curran Price. Thank you for allowing these renters to get back their money. Well, actually, the landlord. Yes. And then we have CD one, Unisus caving in to the developers and thieves. Let's give her a hand on number fifteen. Alright. That's right. Yes. I have hope for you, Unisus, but you're breaking my heart a little bit at a time. And then number fourteen for CD fourteen. Another good job by Kevin, giving the money back to the poor landlord. Then the indicted one on sixteen, Curran DeMille indicted Price, giving back the money on Fifty-Fourth Street. Another shithole area that nobody would live in. I think Curran should pay people to live in that place, rather than charge them rent. How dare you charge them anything to live in your dirty, dirty district? And then we have CD thirteen, North Occidental, a beautiful place to live. Hugo Soto, and what do we call him? Stalin. Stalin is going to give the money back, yes. Now let's talk about the juicy item. Yes, from the big one five, the Buckethead community has put a new person, Douglas Epperhart, on the Board of Useless Neighborhood Commissioners. He's been serving for years. He's really old too. He must be at least eighty. He looks ninety. I don't think he looks a day over ninety-five. Yes, he looks good. So we support the nomination. Congratulations, Buckethead somehow found someone qualified. Did you know, Marquesi, he's been gainfully employed with no criminal record since nineteen eighty-five? Holy fucking Jesus Christ. Imminently qualified. Now we'll get to the public comment.
General public comment.
Yes, now, as you know the palace intrigue, I was in court this morning with you and your friends. I think he got fucked. We'll find out if he got fucked. Did you hear anything, Pumpkinhead? One of your clients is going to get fucked by a judge? No, you didn't hear? No, because you're busy here counting the change while we're counting the strips of gold. And of course, Tracy Park keeps fucking up with those RVs. We're going to go down tonight to Delray and make a count on how many RVs are down in Delray. I hope to see less than twenty-two of them. I will leave a progress report. Thank you, Alelda, for showing up for once for that $240,000 paycheck. And finally, where is Moni Cow? We have food. I saved some food from yesterday. Moo! And don't forget, as I always say, on a happy note, fuck the city council!
Yeah, general public comment. Congratulations, Heather. I'm glad you won your seat. Medea, I'm glad you won your seat. We need to fix, people keep telling me, the sidewalks need to be fixed, the streets need to be fixed. Everything needs to be, everything needs to be fixed in this damn city. Prices should go down to be low, prices should be lower on things like grocery stores. All, everything should be lower. Fuck the minimum wage for the restaurants.
On that positive note, I'm here basically to thank the council and specifically Councilwoman Hutt for coming through with the needed fifty thousand out of her cash stash to basically do the repairs at the running track at Jackie Robinson Stadium. I got an email photograph of the repairs that were done from Jimmy Kim yesterday and the work is fantastic. The track's going to open on April first, but it's really great when you get elected to council and with the signature of a pen, you can make such a magnificent difference. So again, thank you to Councilwoman Hutt. Thank you to the council as a whole for passing her motion authorizing the money. Also, a thanks to Councilman McCosker and Yeroslawski for introducing the two motions on the Rancho, uh, tanks, uh, the Plains Rancho tanks in San Pedro, because we're talking, council, twelve point, twenty-five million gallons of butane in two twelve-and-a-half million gallon tanks. We've got to basically begin to mitigate that risk. Thank you very much.
Um, it doesn't take a minute long to say that everybody is watching what's happening across the world, watching children die, being bombed by, um, the IDF, watching thirteen thousand children be killed by it, watching over thirty-five thousand Palestinians be killed by it. Not wanting kids to die has nothing to do with religion or anything. What's happening is a humanitarian crisis. We need to stop ignoring it. I please urge you, city council, to put forward a ceasefire resolution. It's what everybody wants and the governments around the world are starting to join in. Chicago signed a ceasefire resolution, Long Beach did as well. It's time that LA joins on and stands up for the innocent people of Palestine that are dying right now. Please, ceasefire now, free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we'll go to phones. I believe we have six callers on the line.
Our sixth unmuted.
Yes, this is Jake, I'm a smoking scoundrel.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, welcome, Pumpkinhead. Let me get all available items and general public comment, if you will, please, sir.
So you have three minutes for the items. That's items ten through nineteen and one minute for general public comment? Please begin with the items first.
Cool, thank you, Dan. Cool, thank you, brother. And FYI, Eric Previn is pretty pissed because y'all keep skipping over him and giving him shit when he's calling there, um, Groot. And I just wanted to let you know there because he said if you skip him today, you know, your little fortress cookie ass is going to be headed back to town on the first thing smoking. So I would give my man a, you know, a little time and, you know, let him speak when he wants to speak instead of cutting in on him there because, you know, it's not a good thing to, you know, not respect the man when he's speaking. He's a very intelligent man and he gets things done, even though he gives you shit.
So caller, I can't tell which item you're speaking to. If you'd like, you can speak to anything in this.
I was speaking to, I was, I was speaking to, you know, Eric Previn, how you keep giving him a shit, Groot, when he's calling?
Okay, so I'm going to move you to general public comment because none of this is on the agenda. So you have one minute for general public comment? Go ahead.
That's mighty mighty, there, brother. Um, I want to say what's up to the smoke and scan community there. We're having a good day, you know, a good meeting. Um, you know, my man Damon's hitting out the park. And, um, I think it's funny how, you know, this week we had, the other day we had in a, a, a standing room-only group thinking about dogs and, you know, keeping up with them and, uh, you know, how we should invest more into them there. Yeah, this is, um, you know, women's, um, you know, this is Women's Appreciation Month. So it's kind of crazy how, you know, there's nobody in here, you know, speaking for them there. So it's like we care more about four-legged bitches than we do about two-legged bitches. It's just kind of fucked up because I care about, the only bitches I really care about myself are the ones down on Figueroa that be doing a little thing for a little change that, you know, um, you know, you want to step in on Focus Gang, you'll see something every now and then there, you know, the ones down at the elbow room bar. Um, and I think, you know, that's probably do a little bit more for the, for the two-legged bitches, you know, if you really cared, you know, um, you would do things, maybe like, um, you know, pass off some hits, you know, because they taking shots every now and then. Because last night we were on and, oh my God, the bitches were taking a little blessing right there, you know?
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
What's up nerds and virgins? Brock Landers, Los Angeles Private Investigator.
And which item would you like to speak to?
All open items and a general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment? Please begin with the items.
Thank you. Uh, so I went and I looked up Douglas on Google. He looks like a wife beater and/or a chomo. Rob Quan, to answer your question about where Paul is, allegedly Mambo is in town.
What, what item is this on?
Why not? I, I just said number nineteen. Are we good? Groot, are we good on nineteen?
Alright, continue. It's item eighteen.
Why not name the park Smoke and Scan Community Park? Marquis, maybe at the grand opening, we can finally host our LA City Council charity boxing event you keep ducking me on. Andrew Gravener versus KDL, the goat puppet versus Bob, Jason versus the call screener, Mr. Spindler versus Paul, Eric Previn versus Groot.
Speaker, I can't, now I cannot tell which item you're speaking to. So please identify the item you're speaking to.
I'm talking about the park in event of event we could throw for charity to earn money so we could build more parks. Okay? Stop being grumpy. I'm sorry that all your siblings just fell out of your mom when that big fucking head came out.
So this is your last warning? I need you to stick to the agenda or I'm going to move you to general public comment?
I was on the agenda talking about the park. Alright, uh, let's see, so let's see, Monica versus the Quiet Game, Stacy versus Nithya. Uh, you can take me to general public comment now.
General public comment?
Dude, I'm surprised for as big as your head is that your ears aren't bigger and don't work better. Uh, let's see, Stacy, you were talking about having to play with a broken phone? If you need something to play with that isn't broken, let me mo- let me know. Tell your mom I said hello. And, uh, honestly, you guys need to step up your game. At Smoke and Scan, we've been watching some videos from the Dalton City Council in Illinois and for as small of a city as it is, they are making your grifting game look pretty fucking weak. So, uh, step it up. And, uh, Groot, why won't you answer Jason's question about why are you burning all the dookie? And, uh, Daniel Gus, at danielgus.substack.com, keep up the work. Uh, you can tell they're scared of you, brother. They, uh, don't like anything you got to say trying to silence you all they can. And, uh, Groot, maybe next time you can, uh, wear one of those Monica Rodriguez gag balls. I'll see if I can get the company to send you one for free.
Next caller?
Um, can you tell me what items are available, please?
So the items that are available for public comment are ten through nineteen.
Alright, I'll take all of those and all that REAP bullshit and general public comment, please.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment? Please begin with the items.
Alright, wonderful. Um, so we have items ten through fucking seventeen, all to remove properties from REAP. Now, uh, REAP is some bullshit. Uh, it's literally hiding up old my part of the contract. So the money you're supposed to pay me is going to sit in this little box and then when I get around to it... so the money you're supposed to pay me is gonna sit in this little box, and then when I get around to it, I know the money's there and I can finally do what I need to do and collect that money. So that's nonsense. I'm gonna reserve that time for a little bit later when I come back to that. Number 18 is a bonk appointment. I think it's interesting that if you look at the wording of the motion itself, it lists like F equals this, M equals this, V equals that. Not since for female equals four and male equals two and vacant equals one. I think it's interesting that, you know, Los Angeles talks all this shit about, you know, being like, oh, we're so progressive on gender and all this shit. We're not trying to do this or that, and then they organize the seats based on gender? That's how they represent the number of people on the board, not like how many of people are business owners, how many of them are renters? Nothing like that. How many of them are disabled? How many of them fucking went to college in 1965 and are so out of touch of reality that they don't know what the fuck's going on today? You know, that's, it's interesting how they organize the seats like that. Uh, number 19 is to waive the right-of-way requirement to work on a public park. Um, of course, that's a great idea to be having public parks. We all want more places to chill at and smoke without getting caught. Um, however, that being said, waiving the right-of-way requirement kinda implies to me that you're gonna build out towards the street and pedestrians are gonna have less space to walk around the park, and people are getting run over every day in this fucking city. And it's already such a problem walking around properties to begin with, because there's no obligation for the property owners to build a sidewalk. And if the city's gonna waive right-of-way requirements, which I think involves that, then it's gonna be impossible for people that are disabled, people that are old, people that are using different mobility devices, like those like little fucking scooters. I don't know how they're gonna get around that part. They're gonna have to just run over little kids and animals and shit to get to the end, because it'd be way safer for them. Um, back to number 11, 12, 13, and so and so. Um, REAP is interesting, because I don't understand the purpose of taking a property off the REAP program. Like, how does a landlord really lose from REAP? And how does the, I mean, how does the public, you know, fucking gain anything from that? You know, the city looks good 'cause it looks like they're doing something for renters. Why would they take their, I think people should look into that more often and see who owns these properties and what properties get hit with liens more often than others, which ones have their penalties waived and other requirements and evaluations expediated and just thrown into the bin so we don't have to even know what the fuck they're building until it's too late.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
Alright, I will be speaking on all items and general comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Alright, so starting off, we have REAP items. Um, you know, just, that's not really doing much. Um, you know, maybe if, um, maybe if the property's in so much disrepair that, um, that there's no, um, that things aren't working and you're having to, you know, to get the property into a program with the city, maybe you should be waiving rents from the tenants and if they don't, they're not paying for an apartment that's in complete disrepair and that, that, you know, maybe you should waive the rent so that they're not paying for, you know, thousands of dollars a month for properties that don't have running water or don't have all kinds of maintenance issues and so forth. Um, maybe you should waive that rent. Um, and you know, properties getting such disrepair, they get condemned, the tenants end up on the street. Um, and then they get pushed around by 4118. The 4118 report back you keep hiding is talks about that. Um, but, but you know, you have, you just put them in the REAP, you continue charging the tenants for an apartment that doesn't work, and then, and then once the landlord, um, you know, fixes it, they still get the vast majority of the money anyway for an apartment that they were providing where the conditions might not even have been livable. Um, so yeah, it's a, it's a great program, isn't it? Um, alright, let's go into general comments.
You have one minute.
I see Paul likes to duck in the back right during general comments so that he doesn't have to hear people yell at him, but he needs to resign from the council presidency, or at least he needs to, I mean, he's, you know, actively campaigning, using his position as council president to campaign for a candidate for elected office. Um, he shouldn't be council president. He shouldn't have been council president. And you know, I get the motions every day. I asked for a motion to remove him from the council presidency since he refused to resign yesterday. I didn't see it on yesterday's motion. Will I see it on today's motion? Or are you all, or is the, are we just, is it just empty words from some of our progressive council members? Like Unisus Hernandez, who I don't think has even issued a statement on Paul's ethics violations. Um, you know, she's apparently fighting against the corruption but can't even issue a statement on Paul's obvious and blatant ethics violations. Um, Kevin Delian needs to resign. You're losing.
And I apologize. If the previous caller is still there, um, they still have their general public comment. So, next caller.
Yes, I'm here. Hold on.
I'm sorry. One minute for general public comment.
Alright, general public. Yup, yup. Alright, so, uh, hey, KDL, I'll figure this out. Uh, Efren, Efren Rios Monti was supported by Israel since, uh, 1974, and he even said in 1982, "Our soldiers were trained by Israelis." So, uh, that's kinda interesting how you left that out. Um, and Jose Galvez, I think it's interesting that you would exile to the country that's the source of the deaths in your, in your, uh, in your country. You know, all these death squads were trained by the US, and you chose to flee and exile to the US because of those right-wing extremists? That seems a little backwards. Um, everybody look at how they do general public comment, how they organize it. Uh, first of all, thank you, Groot, for putting me back on. Uh, second of all, look how they arbitrarily change the timing of public comment and how much time they spend on presentations versus public comment. This city is millions of people, and they spend less than a couple hours on public comment every day. They usually spend about 30 to 45 minutes. It's pretty sad. Um, also look at all the fascist symbols.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
Yeah, hi, DanielGus.substack.com. Thank you, Brocklanders.
Good morning. And which items would you like to speak to?
And focused in, great show last night. All items and general public comments. Thank you, Brocklanders.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin. Start us time over. Thank you.
Okay, we're starting. Hey, item number 18, that caller, if you call us back, made perfectly good sense. Why, I have nothing against Mr. Epperhart, but why is the gender relevant to this position? Does a penis or a vagina have to do with job performance here? And if you're going to be so focused on the private parts of the nominee, why aren't you including a category for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning their gender, intersex, asexual? I mean, where is your, you're either gonna be about gender or you're not. LGBTQIA++ How come item number 18 only accounts for two genders? You make a big deal all day, every day of the year about gender. Why does item 18 or any of your other appointees only account for male or female?
Caller, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
Okay, sure. Um, rent escrow, fantastic. You know, if you think I'm a critic who doesn't have anything positive to say, rent escrow is how government should work. Landlords are not treating their tenants correctly. I think that's a great damn thing when you hold them accountable for bad conditions there. So for those of you in housing or whoever addresses the rent escrow account program, kudos to you guys, 'cause it works. Every time we see a property getting off of REAP, uh, it's a sign that some of these policies do work, and it's a sign that I will applaud any politician who actually does this stuff properly. So that's how it should work. Um, and, um, you know, I'll applaud you on each of these items, provided, like the other caller said, provided that, uh, you know, people aren't getting fees waived in the event that they're connected to a council member, and god knows, the council of the city of Los Angeles sure has, sure has a lot of questionable relationships, like for example, when it comes to REAP, how come Current Price is claiming only $10,000 in rent for a $1.6 million house for the past 10 years? And you have him voting on REAP issues? How is he getting only $800 a month for a $1.6 million hillside home owned by somebody he has reported to be his wife or not his wife? So, so, so there's a little bit of corruption going on here, guys. When your own colleague is voting on REAP issues, Mr. Current Price, but only claims to be getting $800 a month rent for the past decade for a $1.6 million hillside home? How can that be? Okay, I'll go on to my general public comment now. Uh, council members, yesterday I have a story about Larry Gross, the LA Animal Services Commissioner, who, um, has a penchant for using hidden email accounts to conduct city business. Uh, where's somebody, Mr. Hernandez, where are you standing up about these multitude of hidden email accounts for a commission appointment who has no business being at animal services, Larry Gross? How is it he's allowed to use private email accounts to conduct city business? You do know that that could impact the nonprofit, uh, status of the animal services or your other nonprofits, not to mention his. Um, he was in court today, or his lawyers were in court today, on a very shaky defamation lawsuit against an animal rescuer who you should be putting in his place on that commission. I'll have an update on that soon, because Mr. Gross may be exposing the city of Los Angeles to huge financial liability. DanielGus.substack.com.
Caller, your time has expired.
14 eyes?
Alright. What's next? You're out. This is your second warning. We'll ask the sergeants to please excuse this member of the public.
Ms. Lewis, you've been ordered removed. Please leave right now quietly.
Please, continuing to disrupt, please exit quietly. Please exit the
Apologies to the public.
Chamber immediately and do so quietly.
Ms. Lewis is still shouting as she's leaving. Sorry.
Please leave quietly and quickly.
And Ms. Lewis is still shouting as she leaves the chamber, disrupting our meeting. Apology, she's still shouting, preventing our business.
Alright, uh, thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Uh, Mr. McCos, oh, we'll go next to Councilmember McCosker.
Oh, we go to Rampart. We go to the Rampart crisis. Rampart was a horrific series of events where officers engaged in illegal behavior. They broke the law. They broke, they violated the Constitution. They broke their oath. They broke the law. They hurt people. We couldn't fire any of those guys. We did not have the ability to fire a single one of those officers. That was bad, because Section 1070 says so. At that time, there was a lot of discussion. I guarantee you, there was discussion when the federal government swooped in and said, "We need a consent decree." I guarantee you, there was discussion. You have to have the ability to impose the most serious discipline on officers, termination. And I think the response then, I'm sure the response then was, "It's in the charter. It's up to the people, not us. Can't do that in an agreement. It's up to the people." Did we present? Did we collectively, the good people of Los Angeles, present to the voters the ability to fire officers? No, we didn't do it. We did a bunch of other things. I think the consent decree did a lot of things that brought more accountability and reform to the police department. Go forward to Measure C. Measure C is presented to the voters with the intent that we will push back on this issue of command officers who owe their lives, their careers, their mortgages, their car payment, their kid's braces, to a chief who tells them what they want to do, and we'll come up with an all civilian panel. And the good news is, we said we're also gonna analyze it a few years later. It passes. It goes into place. We analyze it a few years later, and it didn't have, it did not have the intended effect of improving the discipline system. It just didn't. And so here we are today, and I will say through the thoughtfulness and the willingness to sit down and talk, we have a co-proposal between Councilmember Soto Martinez and myself and the participation of, uh, of others, and I hope with the support of all of you, to be able to do for the first time in the history of 1070, to present to the voters the question, "Shall we have the chief with the ability to fire officers in the most egregious cases?" And then the question becomes, "What's egregious?" Well, fortunately, we also have a roadmap for that. SB2, some very brave, dedicated folks up in Sacramento, passed a piece of legislation that tells us how we can decertify an officer. SB2 tells us what decertification is. I think, it's just me talking, this is not in the motion today, but I think SB2 is the roadmap for termination. And it includes a whole bunch of things. It includes dishonesty. It includes abuse of power. It includes, it includes the number of things that you would consider, that I think we would all consider to be serious. But that's a question for after today, after I hope we get an i-vote.
Many of the words that you said, Councilmember McCosker, I think it's taken us a long time to get to this point, and I know it can be incredibly frustrating for all of us, including the public, who have had to witness just these terrible things that happen in our streets and nationally. But I think due to all the work and the organizing that's happened, and I think the formation of this council and council president, I want to thank you for your leadership as well, that even though we have disagreements on these very serious issues, and what could be more serious than, than this issue at hand? And so I'm very happy to have worked with this, with Councilmember McCosker, and I also urge an i-vote on this item. Thank you so much.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes. 14 eyes? And Councilmember McCosker, you wish to be heard again?
Just to ask that we send, um, 5 and 18 forthwith.
Without objection, that will be the order. Thank you very much.